All right, it is 7:00 PM and I would like to welcome everybody to the regular city council virtual meeting for Monday, August 24th, 2020. I'll go ahead and start by asking us to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and Holly will be doing our roll calls and taking care of business because Barb is not here this evening, so Holly, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Here.
Bizzard?
Here.
Bellinger?
Here.
Weiss? Reins?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
I received a text message from Councilman Weiss earlier today that he had a medical procedure and will not be able to join us this evening.
Make a motion.
All right, thank you, Councilman Smith, thank you, Councilman Bizzard, appreciate that. And now I am looking for approval of the agenda for this evening.
Do we need to take a vote?
Oh, sorry, vote for Councilman Weiss.
Roland?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Holly, and now approval of the agenda for this evening if there are no changes that need to be made. Cory, yes?
Hi, Mayor, thank you. We as staff would request the addition of an item under 8(c), action item, for the engineering inspection services for the Beckham Utilities Edition, which we can provide more information for. We did send out a message to council toward the end of the day. This was something that just came together today.
Correct, thank you, Cory, I appreciate that.
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition. Smith?
Thank you.
Second, Reins.
Thank you. Holly, we call the roll?
Bizzard?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Do we have any audience members, Holly?
We have Matthew Fredericks here.
Okay. Good evening, Matthew.
Good evening. Um, I was calling, I don't know if you guys are aware, but a bunch of us in Williamson area are having huge issues with our internet service. To the point that it's through Wide Open West that, I mean, there's hundreds of us that are having intermittent outages like five to 10 per hour where the internet just goes down. All of us have contacted WOW, on the phone with WOW, we cannot get a straight answer out of them and I mean, to the point now, it's actually affecting Old Nations Business, they're losing a ton of business because of, because their phones aren't working and I'm just trying to figure out why there are no other options for internet inside, besides Frontier, like if there's an agreement or what's going on and why there's no other cable companies out here? And then if there's anything the city council could do to help us citizens out, because my children are about to start school next week and we need our internet stable and I'm working from home and it's just WOW is being anything but helpful.
Correct. Matthew, thank you so much for your comments and we are aware of it, I'm sure with everybody on social media and I know a lot of people do belong to the Williamson City Update page and and so, yes, I think all of us as council members have probably experienced that. We are going to add this as a discussion item to our next agenda. Just because we do not typically add items at the last minute, our packet is produced the Thursday before council meetings. However, what we will do is we can go ahead and have maybe our city manager contact WOW as well to voice our concerns at the council level that we're not getting good service, but we have, we are going to be adding that as a future discussion item and I would think that the more that the residents do call in and voice their concerns, hopefully WOW will see that it is going to be something that needs to be taken care of sooner rather than later. So I do appreciate you being here this evening.
I mean, I appreciate you taking that into consideration. I mean, coincidentally, as I went to log into today's city council meeting, my internet's down at this time.
Okay.
So, and I mean, it's it's just very concerning because this time next week, my kids are going to need this stable internet to do their school and I mean, it's just infuriating me trying to work from home. I can't imagine my nine and 11 year old trying to attend school fading in and out, so. And we do have a ton of people that have contacted WOW, they give a different story to everybody and WOW is not giving a straight answer to anyone, so. Any help that the city could do, the manager of the city council, I would greatly appreciate it because I mean, I literally call them two to three times a day and they just, they are not doing anything about it.
Okay, well, we appreciate that information and like I said, we will be actively, you know, working on it as well to see what we can do to find out why the outages are happening and what WOW's resolution would be to that. Holly, do we have, Holly, do we have any other audience members?
Uh, we do not.
Okay, all right, moving along then, I'm looking for approval of the council meeting minutes from August 10th, 2020, if there's no changes that need to be made.
Motion to approve the minutes, as Smith.
Smith, thank you.
Second, Reins.
Thank you. Holly, we call the roll, please.
Bellinger? Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving right into our action items, we have two items this evening, the first, or I'm sorry, three items with the addition of Beckham. The first is the Drain Commissioners Land Access Agreement. Oh, shoot, I put a check next to it, I've got it. Accounts payable, Noah.
Cory dropped off the packet earlier today, I had a chance to review it. I struggled with it a little bit, it was not in all proper order, so it took a little longer to get through it, but everything matched and looked good. And I, there's a couple pass-throughs that people might want to ask about, but I'd like to make a motion to approve accounts payable, checks outlined on page 7, 1a, 7 through 3 with checks 18a dated 8, 3 of 2020 through check 7, 3, 5, 1, 0 dated 8, 13, 2020 in the amount of $234,916.47.
Second, Smith.
Noah, I think that last check was supposed to be 7, 3, 5, 0, 1.
Could be, hang on.
Okay, I thought I heard 5, 1, 0.
Okay. Hang on, flip the page here. And it should be, I'll make a friendly amendment, it's 7, 3, 5, 0, 1, correct.
Thank you. Yes, Tim.
Yes, it looks like there was also some ACH payments on the list to be approved.
That's, that's, Tim, that's why I suggested quoting the pages. You know, item 7, page 1 through item 7, or 7, page 3, because there's some odd number like 820 and some other things, that's why I included referencing the pages.
All right, they're also listed at the top as ACH 18 through 22.
Yep, I would include that in a friendly amendment as well, Noah.
Okay. Let's do that, I will make a friendly amendment to include those.
All right, thank you.
Second, Smith again.
All right, thank you. Any discussion or questions regarding any of the payables? Okay, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right, and now on to our action items for this evening. First up is Drain Commissioner Land Access Agreement. Cory?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a simple one-page agreement that the Drain Commissioner has asked the city to sign off on, which would allow the Drain Commissioners Contractor to access the river through what we call Thurlby Park, which is really just the dead-end portion of McCormick Street as well as certain areas within the wastewater treatment plant. They are doing a project along with Williamstown Township to clear log jams in the Red Cedar River and as a public location, you know, we have a desirable access point into the river for their equipment to help remove some of those log jams. We had a big powwow out there with the whole group a couple weeks ago to go over, you know, where the city would be comfortable with that access happening and there's a pretty solid plan with staff to make that happen. From the city's perspective, this is a good thing because we are jointly working through our DDA with the Williamstown Township to improve that recreational corridor through Red Cedar River and we have our own grant through the DDA to help with that project at our, our old car wash site at the west end of downtown where we would have a launch area, some parking that's potentially going to be added here. So from our perspective, it's a, it's a good thing to partner on. We feel really confident talking with the Drain Commissioners Office, the engineer on the project and the contractor that, you know, we're talking about a very solid reputable company that will, will do a good job of cleaning up anything that they might leave or might cause at our, our site, so. With that, simply asking for a motion to approve entering into that agreement as noted in the packet.
All right, thank you, Cory.
I have a question.
Yes, John.
Are we, are we talking heavy equipment coming in through there or what, what kind of equipment are we talking? Is it going to be doing any? Is there going to be any restoration work to the park is what I'm getting at?
Yeah, Scott, would you mind chiming in on that as far as specific equipment?
Yeah, they, oh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. They described that they've got excavators that have large tracks that are intended to go in these types of environment and not dig in as much. So, I've seen the type of equipment before, it's, we don't see it in our area very often, but it, I, it's the best that they can do, it's built for this type of environment, John, and, and they should be able to clean up whatever mess they make.
Okay, I'm assuming they're removing them or are they just putting them off to the side on people's property?
They're, they're gonna try and put as many out, like in the floodplain area off, out of, you know, intertwining in other trees. There could be a few that have to be removed because there's not an appropriate adjacent area.
Okay, I just think of the spot that's out there towards Raleigh Road and 52, they went through and cleared and they did a good job, but it just, they left so much there and it just looks like it could flood back in again, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we talked about that and what they're gonna try and do, especially near, you're familiar with where the golf course is and there's a lot of woods between the golf course and the, the river there. That was a perfect example where they'll put them and intertwine them into the existing trees so that they will rot naturally and, and return to the earth.
So are they accessing that point and going upstream as well as downstream?
I took it they would go either direction they need to, is that the way you took it, Cory?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. I just, I didn't know what kind of equipment, I'm just worried about if the restoration was going to be done and complete to the satisfaction of the city and I just, you know, you're talking about wet, mucky areas, so.
Right.
Thanks, John, that was a great question. Any other questions?
The contractor that's doing the work, I worked with them, oh gosh, 25 years ago on some other projects, so they've got the right kind of equipment.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess that, I have a question along those same lines. I know that Thurlby Park area is not a very wide area. I think this is a good project for, for the river and I, I think it's going to be a, be a net gain, but we have residences on either side of Thurlby Park and it's not a very wide corridor in there, so if we could make sure we explain that that entire open area down there is not Thurlby Park and you have so, so the residents there don't end up, if they haven't signed off with the, with the heavy equipment or the trees or whatever ending up on.
Yeah, actually, the city, the property that is to the east of Thurlby Park, that property does not have frontage on the river. The city actually owns from the Thurlby Park, which is the, the road right-of-way extension of McCormick to the river, 66 foot wide. And then we also own that strip between the river and that house all the way to the wastewater property.
Okay, so the house to the east doesn't extend to the river, but the one on the west, I'm assuming does.
The one on the west does, yes.
Yeah, that property owners actually put up private property signs down there just because me and some, some of my neighbors have actually had that conversation, so as long as we make sure that we know that that resident knows that we're going to be doing that, so that we don't have any problems or issues in case he does forward. As long as we don't get over there on his side. Yes, Tim?
Yes, I was not asked to review this agreement. I'm seeing it in the packet for the first time. If I were asked to approve it, I would, or review and approve it, I would have to get a waiver of conflict letter from both the Drain Commissioner and the city, which I'm willing to do, but it is, appears to be a standard landowner agreement for these purposes. I'm not certain if there would be any necessary changes to it and it does allow for restoration of the ground and it is limited to the particular parcel here. If they needed to address a different parcel, they'd have to get that landowner's permission on a similar form.
Okay, all right, thank you, Tim. With that being said then, would we need to make change to the requested action to include what, what Tim is asking for?
I didn't, I'm not asking.
What about the conflict of interest?
That's only if you're going to ask me to review and approve.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. So we can move forward as is then, if we're not asking for that, okay. Does anybody else have any other questions for Scott or Cory regarding this?
None being, Bellinger will make the motion to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the Hennepin County Drain Commissioner Red Cedar River Log Jam Removal Land Owner's Agreement.
Thank you.
Second, Smith.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up on the action list is the Boardwalk Replacement Grant Resolution. Cory?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution that was passed along from Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. That entity is how we have received this grant, but as we gave them an update a couple weeks ago stemming from the passing of the engineering agreement, letting them know that we're moving forward, the staff there noted that we still needed to pass this resolution. So although the money comes from Tri-County Regional Planning Commission or it's awarded by Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, the, the ultimate funds come from the state of Michigan through their Transportation Alternatives Program. So this is a standard resolution that the TAP program asks its grantees to pass and so we've simply modified that to fit our project. My understanding is that this is needed to basically satisfy the file for the state. I do anticipate that, you know, this project is continuing to move forward, the, the survey work started about two weeks ago, you may see some survey stakes out there by the boardwalk. So this is just a, you know, a record-keeping component.
Great. Any questions for Cory regarding this? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to move it forward.
I make a motion to approve attached resolution to establish a request for funding, designate an agent, attest to the existence of funds and commit to implementing a maintenance program for the Red Cedar Trail Segment Project funded by the Transportation Alternatives Program. Reins?
Thank you.
Bellinger's support.
Thank you. If there's no further questions or discussion, I'll ask Holly to call the roll.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Smith? Bizzard?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
All right, our last action item for the evening is the Beckham property with the construction that's going on and I know Cory sent out an email to us, so council members, if you had an opportunity to review that, but I'm going to have Cory go ahead and, and give us that information as well.
Sure, and I think for this, I'm just going to toss it to Scott who knows the details.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, sorry, we apologize for the late nature of this, but it came upon us really late last week and we're trying to be as business-friendly as possible. Beckham's project was put on hold with the COVID thing and they, they also went back to the drawing board, but then came back with the, the, the plan that they originally produced. And then we found out in the middle of last week that things were starting to happen and started getting contacts and finding out what had to happen on the water sewer side. And they're planning on installing the sanitary sewer beginning later this week. So we needed to react very quickly to this. C2AE has been involved in the design process. We checked with both Beckham and Cory and I discussed it. We don't foresee there to be an issue with conflict of, of interest type of thing in this particular situation. Beckham is supposed to supply a 7% upfront escrow and then if the, the construction takes longer than what that escrow will cover, they will be on the hook to basically supply the remainder. So this ends up being more of a pass-through. We need to have an engineering company out there during portions of the sanitary sewer installation and on the water installation to basically document things and make sure they're being done according to the specifications and according to what we have to do to satisfy permits through Eagle. They will report to me as far as any issues or questions or that type of thing. Worked with them before, I really don't see an issue with this. So they put forward a very simple contract, more of their general services paperwork with an attachment saying this is the scope of this project. They initially indicated the $4,340 of the initial escrow, but that could increase a little bit based on what happens with construction. If you're looking for some guidance as to, I, I guess, Tim, I don't know if they need a specific dollar amount and they, or do you want us to estimate something much higher? What would be the recommendation there?
I don't have an objection to just indicating that the initial escrow is in the stated amount at this time with an indication that it could be increased at a later date.
Okay, and then it would be increased based on what we need to get in the escrow then and we wouldn't have to go back to council or how do you see that?
I think we could just address that as a contingency. Either that or just give a higher amount.
Not to exceed?
The comfort of council in, in an amount, do you think it'll exceed 5,000?
I don't think it'll exceed 9,000.
5,000.
5,000, uh, it could, it could. I mean, you, you could see this go as much as 6, 7, or even 8,000, just, I've seen that kind of thing happen before.
So not to exceed 10,000 would be safe then, Scott? And that's really going a little bit higher, but it gives the wiggle room?
Be very, very adequate.
Okay, so with that being said, there was a suggested motion at the bottom of that email. Does anybody have their email up and open that they would be able to offer up that motion? And then also including estimated escrow not to exceed 10,000? I do have it open, I could read it and then somebody could, you got it, Gene, thank you.
I've got it, Tammy. All right, motion to approve general engineering services agreement with C2AE to provide water and sewer inspections for Beckham Americas Edition Project. And then adding in not to exceed $10,000.
Thank you.
Second, Reins.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion or questions for this?
I have one question for Scott.
Okay, all right, I, I saw John first and then we'll go to Jeff, so go ahead, John.
Uh, Scott, are they going to be adding this on to the city's GIS program, so location services and everything like that will be current and up to date?
We'll get record information on that. I might be sending Scott out there to pick up like valve locations and they're adding a fire hydrant, there's about 300 feet of water main being put in that is under our care. There will be an easement that comes later. They will not get certificate of occupancy on the building until that easement is fully executed with the city. Oh, I'd also like to note that their connection fees are pretty substantial, it's 7,300 on the water side and $19,780 going to be coming in on the sewer side as part of their TAP fee, so that's, that's part of the revenue of our water and sewer system, so that's a good sign.
Yeah, great, thank you. Jeff, Roland?
Yeah, just because this is a spontaneous addition to the agenda, I, I, I didn't know if there was anyone that could give like, whether it's Scott or whatnot, 40,000-foot overview of, you know, why this is even moving toward a motion and approval for the city to anything to move this forward and, and, you know, what have you, so it's all very spontaneous.
Yeah, well, otherwise we hold up their development project, which we're trying to help facilitate a major expansion going to one of our businesses.
We're contributing money, right? Is that what I'm understanding here?
No, this is a pass-through. So this contract, Beckham has to pay money into the escrow for us to pay the engineering company. So it doesn't cost the, our ratepayers anything for this. In fact, I was pointing out that, you know, we, we actually get money in the big scheme of things for the water and the sewer system as part of the TAP fees.
Perfect, thank you for pointing that out, that, and it's important to note in the open meeting, thank you.
Very definitely, and, and we, we often hesitate to bring things like this so quickly, but because of it pulling up one of our customers' projects because they, they want to get constructing this week and we've got to have someone out there inspecting it. And it doesn't cost us anything, it's basically just running it through.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions before I call for the roll? Okay, Holly, call the roll, please. Roland?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bizzard?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. We did not have any discussion items on our agenda. We did not receive any correspondence or information only, so I'll move right along to our department head reports. Cory, you had a vacation last week, hopefully very restful. Is there anything that you'd like to share with us?
Uh, I, yeah, I did not have a written report this week due to the vacation. It's good, it was nice to take some time. The only thing I will note tonight is appreciated the comments during public comments today. We did get a call or two that came through City Hall with the same concern expressed. Toward the very end of the day, I did reach out to a contact that we once had at WOW that has been helpful when needing to elevate things. So I, I haven't heard anything back yet, this was very late in the day, but we're at least starting that process to try to get some insights into maybe what's happening in the field right now. And so as we get more information and can pull that together, happy to share that either at the next council meeting or if we have more information quicker than that, I can do that. But we've at least made that very or, um, if we have more information quicker than that, I can do that. Um, but we've at least made that very initial, uh, step to try to, to get, address the concerns, so, uh, we'll, we'll take that and go from there.
Great, thank you, Cory. Uh, Chief?
I'm.
Are you out there?
I am, I'm still here, yes, nothing.
All right, thank you. Uh, we also received a report from AGS, uh, Building Services. Cory, um, where are we, just really quick, because this is from AGS, um, is this gonna be the last report we've received from them? Or, or where will we be at? And then will we get similar reports like this from Livingston?
Uh, this report is for July and the, the contract with AGS will terminate at the end of September.
Okay.
Uh, so, so we had a sixty-day notice period and then we agreed to, to take that through the end of a month. Um, so that put us at September thirtieth. Um, Livingston County is in the process of uploading all of the city's parcel information. Uh, actually, it was very impressive, um, all the, in, the work that the city's been doing on the geographic in, information systems or GIS, uh, we were able to quickly turn it over to them, um, and they were, I think they were impressed that, that we had, you know, such a robust database. Um, and so the last I heard was last Thursday. They said that was going well, uh, progressing well to our October first start date. So, uh, to answer your question, I would anticipate that we will have two more reports from AGS and the way that, that, that transition will work is that existing permits will continue to be serviced by them, uh, because they've already been paid. And so they, they go with them until they're closed out or expire. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a tough transition, but both parties have handled it well, so.
Great.
I just appreciate that, yeah.
Great, thanks. I appreciate that as well and I'm glad to hear it's going, going well on the Livingston, uh, side of it. Uh, subcommittee, uh, committee reports. Did anybody attend one of their board meetings that they'd like to share information? Not seen any hands raised, so I'll move along. Uh, we do have another opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes for presentation. Hallie, did we have anybody else join us?
Uh, Matthew Fredericks is still with us.
Okay. All right.
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, thank you, Matthew, again for joining us this evening and bringing forward those concerns. And it sounds like Cory's already made contact, so we'll keep, uh, we'll, we'll, um, keep working on this.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and go around the board for council member comments. I'll start with Noah this evening.
Just a quick question for Cory. Uh, Cory, where are we at with the posting of that, uh, part-time position? Um, and what's the status?
Yeah, um, the position should be posted by the end of this month. Um, what I was attempting to do was to try to line this up with when I knew we would have that transition occurring with AGS. And so chances are it won't line up perfectly. Well, my, my, I'm guessing that we'll probably have, um, that transition will happen before we have somebody actually filling that role, um, but that was the, that was the plan.
Great question.
And then Tammy, no other comments for me.
All right, thank you. That was a great question, Noah. It's good to know the timeframe. Dan Rhines?
No comments, thank you.
All right, thank you. Gene Smith?
Uh, no comments.
All right, uh, Jeff Rowland?
Good or not, thanks, Tammy.
All right, thank you. And John Bizzard?
Yeah, the, the donation bins, uh, just so happened to be driving into town just now and outside tractor supply is overflowing and it looks like people just throwing garbage there again. Um, I noticed when I pulled in, I took a picture. It says Michigan Humane Society. I don't know if we need to come up with something still. I did receive some of the information and read over it and I understand with the not-for-profits and things for that, but I still think that we need to look at something. So that's all I got.
Um, my question would be then, Tim, with that being on private property, because that is TSC's parking lot, would they have responsibility for that and making a connection to the donation bin, um, provider?
I think that's probably the best way to address it is directly with TSC as the potential of a public nuisance being created on their property. I did send the city manager and the mayor some information.
Mm-hmm.
How local ordinances regulating donation bins sponsored by non-for-profit companies can run afoul of the First Amendment and they've been struck down, including one from the city of St. John's.
Mm-hmm.
So ordinance type of enforcement that specifically targets these things might not fly, but I think if we work with the property owner and tell them that they really need to work with their, the, the company that's using their space and that ultimately they have to be held responsible and maybe we have some other more general ordinance enforcement mechanisms to use in connection with the property owner.
I think that's a good idea. John, would you be able to forward those photos that you took to, um, probably Hallie and Cory? And then maybe they could craft a letter to send to TSC regarding it, that there's been, um, a complaint, um, that it's, you know, a nuisance and, and eyesore, that type of thing?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that and I just did a loop and, and it looks like there's starting to happen at DNW a little bit, but I can't tell if it's trash bag on the side or there's something along the side of it.
Right, and I know that we had information that, um, the bin that is over located, uh, behind Sunnyside, uh, that was put there without ID's permission, so, you know, that would have to be the same thing. The city would have to send something to the property owner to have them follow up on it since these are, um, private property issues.
Yep, and there's, it's still there. It's tucked back in the bushes and that, so.
Right. All right, thank you. Um, you know, uh, we're right around the corner from the start of school. It's gonna be a little bit different year, um, for our students here in Williamson, but I still think we need to be aware of the fact that school is going into session. Um, so I wanna wish all of the K through twelve students, um, the best as they enter into this new year, um, with new experiences. And, uh, I send out my well wishes to the parents, um, that will be, uh, helping facilitate their, uh, K through twelve students' learning path. I know that will not be easy, but, um, you know, we love to support our, our school system here and I think that, um, Williamson Schools will do an excellent job, um, with that challenge. And of course, because it is fall, um, you know, the absence of fall sports, um, so, you know, um, it's a different, uh, look for Williamson this fall. And so I just would wish everybody well and, and, you know, just keep taking one day at a time to get through this. Um, but I'm, I'm excited for the seasonal changes that are coming, maybe a little bit cooler weather as we all, you know, round out summer, uh, with Labor Day right around the corner. Um, so I wanna wish everybody a good Labor Day because we won't be in, uh, session again. Uh, before that, um, safe holidays to all. And that's it for my, uh, comments this evening. And so I will go ahead and call to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-seven. Thank you all for being here this evening.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.